I'm going to call this meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council to order and ask for the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Councilmember Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Terry is absent. Vice Mayor Polapati.
Here.
Mayor Sander.
Here. Could you read the meeting announcement, video recording and playback central, please?
Yes. The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Wednesday, June 5th at 7:00 PM and Thursday, June 6th at 7:00 PM on channel 14. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department and a webcast of this meeting will be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
All right. Very good. We are going to do the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence in lieu of an invocation. So if you would please join me in standing and Chief Tumail, if you would lead us in the pledge, please.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now if you'd join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Very good. Chief, I thought I'd catch you unawares, but you rose to the moment. Sort of a rite of passage here, so we weren't sure if you'd been put through that yet or not. Let's see. We've got a presentation of a new employee tonight by Alex Pill. Alex, you want to introduce us to someone? Then we have another initiation we need to do. The singing will come in just a little bit.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Alex Pill. I'm of the Facilities Department and Events Coordinator 2. I'm absolutely thrilled to introduce you to our newest employee on our events team. This is Luba Haluha. She is Event Coordinator 1 to help support all of the wonderful event needs that we have here at City Hall, here within our building and out amongst the rest of the community. The latest one that Luba really just dove right into was Spring Service Day and did an absolutely amazing job and was the lead on the day for the function and I'm just absolutely thrilled to have her here with us.
Thank you, Alex, for introduction. My name is Luba Haluha and I moved to the United States less than two years ago. And firstly, I worked with a nonprofit organization established by Ukrainians, for Ukrainians, and of course with the Ukrainian corporate culture. So theoretically, this is my first job in an American institution. I'm excited. I'm inspired. I'm strongly motivated. I already met a lot of great people, professionals. I'm happy to learn from leaders and I hope my international experience and my skills will benefit the team here, the city and the community. Thank you.
That is, that is wonderful to hear. I hope we can take full advantage of your language skills and your outreach abilities to that community because that community among, you know, we have many unique communities here in Rancho Cordova, but that one in particular has been challenging to fully engage.
I'm ready to help.
There we go. Sounds like we have a great mission for you there. Welcome.
Thank you.
We'll wave the singing in lieu of that. All right. We are going to move on to a public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk who's seated right over here. The speaker cards are in the back of the room. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up by me at the point on the agenda when we're going to hear that item. So if you want to speak on a specific item, wait until we call that item up. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state their name and the community in which they reside, so their community residents. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, we do. We'll start with John Bliss. Following John will be Jessa Rego. Following Jessa will be Amora Perez. You'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sander and members of Rancho Cordova City Council. My name is John Bliss and I'm fortunate to be the principal at Cordova Gardens Elementary. I wanted to thank City Council and the city of Rancho Cordova for a wonderful gift that we received on May 18th. On May 18th, volunteers helping with the city's first Spring Service Day moved 12 pallets over 150 bags of mulch in a tremendous effort to beautify our campus. Just wanted to say thank you to the city for the funding. We felt especially touched that we were chosen for this first round as a school. It means a lot to our school community. I'd also like to make the city aware and the council aware of the amazing work that my staff has done in the past three years to integrate arts and sciences and technology into every grade level in highly engaging, innovative, hands-on learning for our students in Rancho Cordova. As an indication of this good work and future arts and sciences integration, Cordova Gardens Elementary is rebranding itself as Cordova Gardens Academy of Arts and Sciences for the 24-25 school year. Our name will be the highlight of the work that is being done as we enter a new chapter in our school's history to continue to provide a meaningful, esteemed education for students in Rancho Cordova. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That is remarkable. Jessa?
My name is Jessa Rego. I live in Folsom. I work in Rancho Cordova in two different capacities. I'm here for the third time this evening to speak in favor of the ceasefire resolution presented to the council by the Islamic community of Rancho Cordova. They're good friends of mine and I'm also very extremely concerned about a ceasefire and some other issues I'd like to touch on. The last time I was here, I invited the council to Community Iftar. We know that these three-minute comment sections really aren't enough time to have really substantive discussions for such big issues, so we were hoping to be able to have a community event and do some education and interfacing and learn where you're starting and what you think about this issue. I really appreciate some of the really kind verbal responses I got while I was here last time. To my knowledge, we didn't receive any written responses to the written invitations. Please correct me if we missed anything, if we're incorrect about that. Last time I was here, I noticed that the council seemed much more interested in two adults who came in in stormtrooper costumes and played music from Star Wars, the Imperial March. So I wondered if costumes and music was perhaps what I needed to get some more attention to this extremely important emergency issue. Again, these three minutes just really don't cover it. I understand public comment is not a question and answer session, but I'd be curious to know if the council members know why the watermelon has become a symbol for Palestine and not just recently. This goes back a very, very long time. I'd be interested to know if the council is familiar with the music I played and if they understand why it's extremely special and its historical significance. I'm wondering these things of everybody who is not acting like this is an emergency. I'm wondering if the council and a lot of my fellow community members have ever heard of the Nakba, the Sykes-Picot Agreement. There's a lot of imperial history and considering how much Americans love Star Wars, it really surprises me how many of them seem to miss the metaphor and what that means about ourselves in that movie. My time is running out. I would invite you to please reach out to the Islamic community of Rancho Cordova and the greater community that's in support of them in this issue to get some more education about what's going on in your community because it is an emergency. Thank you.
Next speaker is Amora Perez.
Good evening. My name is Amoria Perez and today I'm here to address the ongoing genocide in Palestine, which our community does have a responsibility to take a stand against, namely through divestment and a ceasefire resolution. Divestment is not just a financial strategy, it's also a powerful moral statement. It's a declaration that we as a community refuse to profit from the suffering of others. By divesting from communities that enable or profit the oppression of Palestinians, we send a clear message that we are against the systemic genocide happening there. Today, we are calling on Rancho Cordova to divest from Israel as a way to hold the country accountable for its actions against the Palestinian people. By continuing to invest in Israel, we are prioritizing profits over people and we must ask ourselves if this is the kind of legacy that we want to leave behind. Our requests for a ceasefire resolution were met with no timely responses, so I'm here to make you a promise. If our efforts are not taken seriously, this city hall will look like the one in Sacramento in a very short time. So, as we look to you, our city leaders, we are watching you very closely and we will wait to see where your priorities lie.
Next speaker is Fozia Faruk.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Rancho Cordova City Council. My name is Fozia Faruk and I represent the Council on American Islamic Relations. I'm here to address an issue that though distant geographically, the conflict in Gaza and Palestine deeply affects many in our community, including those with familial ties and all who value human dignity. Recent events, especially in Rafah, show a dire need for action. The ongoing conflict has ignored all previously respected boundaries, leading to significant humanitarian crisis. This conflict impacts us here in Rancho Cordova, not just overseas. The trauma and anxiety felt by our residents call for our council's urgent response. We propose that Rancho Cordova adopts a resolution calling for an immediate ceasefire or response to ours, just as Sacramento and neighboring cities have also done, standing in solidarity with all affected civilians. This action will affirm our city's commitment, excuse me, to human rights and empathy. Moreover, our neighboring college campuses, including UC Davis and Sac State, have seen students forming encampments, demonstrating remarkable bravery in their call for divestment from companies profiting from the conflict. Their efforts inspire us in Rancho Cordova to adopt similar senses and acknowledge that our actions too can foster significant global impact. We must also strengthen our advocacy by urging Congressman Ami Barra to reflect our community's dedication to peace and human rights in his legislative agenda. Tonight, I urge our city to adopt a resolution again or go with the one we have that not only calls for an immediate ceasefire, but also recognizes the influence of local advocacy inspired by our students' efforts. Thank you.
Next speaker, Sarah.
Alzanun.
Thank you. Thank you. I, council members, good evening. My name is Sarah Alzanun and I have been a SAC County resident for the past 33 years. I am a civil servant. I work for the State of California Tax Branch, actually work right down the street here on Trade Center Drive, and I've been a civil servant for the last seven years. I'm here to discuss how we can move forward with a ceasefire resolution in Gaza and divestments in weapons manufacturers. Today's victims in Gaza, including hostages, could have been saved by yesterday's ceasefire. The death of my 56 relatives could have been saved by a ceasefire. Their deaths were senseless and they were preventable. My family is in pieces and my heart will remain in pieces. Wax is sometimes used to hold pieces of body parts together before burial, but there will never be enough wax to cover the hole in my heart. There has never been a war in history where 80% of the country has been destroyed, 100% of the population displaced and 50% of its deaths, deaths of children. I'm related to one of those children that have been killed, one-year-old Yassin Alzanun, same last name as me. He died at the hands of US-made bombs. Some of these bombs are manufactured hours within my residence in the Bay Area. One in six Americans can't afford their utility bills, but our tax dollars fund this war. In fact, utility bills have doubled since 2019. Public opinion is now shifting. City Hall's support in a ceasefire, even if it's symbolic, can send a great message, which this board refuses to even consider. At the end of the day, genocide of the Palestinians is a policy choice. Houses-ness is a policy choice. Investing in weapons manufacturers is a policy choice. Poor healthcare is a policy choice. Access to clean water is a policy choice. Rent control is a policy choice. I know you say that this is beyond the city budget, but you do have a great say in policy choices. You have a say in city investments and divestments. And when all is said and done, you have a choice to stick up for humanity as well as a choice not to. Representational politics is important. You say City Hall doesn't deal with foreign affairs, but the city of Sacramento has sister cities in Israel. You have direct relations with those congressmen and women who support house resolutions and bills that directly affect foreign policy. You say the City Hall may not be complicit in the genocide, but Aerojet is based here in Rancho Cordova. If we can't at least consider a symbolic ceasefire resolution, can we not invest in mass death? The conventional arms transfer policy prohibits weapons to a country when they are more likely to result in genocide, crimes against humanity, breaches of the Geneva Convention, and violence against children, which is happening now. $14 billion sent to Israel and every single penny spent will never benefit a single American citizen here. Thank you.
Mayor Sander, that's all the public comment that we have.
All right. We are going to move on to council reports. Mr. Gatewood, you're up first.
All right. So first, I just want to thank everybody for putting a great Memorial Day on. It was awesome to see Pastor Dan DeShawn running it. I still remember the gentleman, I don't remember his name, he passed away, but he used to sing at that. What was his name?
Bob Burns.
Bob Burns. And so Bob Burns used to sing at that and that was, it was just, it was touching. And it was sad to see all the veterans and hopefully we can have twice them this year or next year coming to that event because it's really something special. I got to see five seconds of the JPA because they are amazing at scheduling, even though I am the chair, so that was awesome. The Rancho Cordova Tech Council met and we talked about all the new technologies that we're going to be putting into the city. I also met with my JPA that handles the connector and I'm proud to report that the connector was able to get $1.6 million of funding. It also has been approved by all council, by all assembly members, including Ami Barra, Doris Matsui and Kevin Kiley have both put in for $10 million apiece. And we are now been shortlisted for $125 million for the last connection at Elk Grove, which the total amount that we need to finish the connector is 300 million. If everything goes successful, which it might, we could have $160 million off it, so we'd only have 140 to go. And I was, I was pretty excited because that's, I said, after this I can drop off because I've brought 160 million some out, but they're like, it took too long. And then finally, I went to the, I don't know if I talked about this, but I went to the Rancho Cordova graduation and it was nice because God blessed us with wind, which was amazing. And it's cool to see all the sub little groups that are set up there, including the construction group, which I think is also a neat thing that the city of Rancho Cordova does, the different schools. That's it. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Budge.
I did attend a funeral for Alrogal, which was really a very nice ceremony. And like Garrett and David, we went to the Cordova High School graduation. Perfectly wonderful event, all these marvelous kids. We, for me personally, this is my gap year. I have, my last grandkid is graduating next year, but there were still friends in the graduating class that were so cool and so deserving of the honor. Memorial Day was really terrific, even though they did not do the dedication of bricks for veterans this year. But we had heard a wonderful speech by a veteran that we all know, whose experiences are really quite remarkable, things that none of us really envisioned. You can't tell this from this man today that he has had these experiences. Yes, Garrett, the HCP met. We met for a whole 30 minutes and you were there for three. That's okay. We really didn't do anything except reauthorize a variety of studies for the, kind of like audits for the, for the year. I joined people from Regional Transit during Siemens. They are making the low-floor cars for Regional Transit. This is actually the largest Siemens factory in the world. They, they are headquartered in Germany and they have done, they have a lot of smaller manufacturing plants in places like Austria and Germany. But here, this is, this is the largest one here and they do some unique things for Rancho Cordova or for local, local trains because in places like Vienna and Zurich, those trains basically run locally and so they don't need to go very fast. But here, we have the trains running out to the suburbs and it is important that they go faster than the trains for Vienna and Austria and Zurich and places like that. And so they, they have a completely different, completely different drivetrain system. But David, for people who like big machines, this was a big machine glory. It was really terrific. Community council starts movies in the park on Friday night and they'll be in the Village Green Park whenever it gets dark. And finally, this past weekend, the Symphony Doro had a unique event. They did not only a concert, which was all supposedly hot Latin music and some was very familiar and some was brand new, but there were two important things that happened. They showed a film that the California Capitol Film Office had made about the symphony and about its people and about what it does. And in it, they interviewed, well, they interviewed Micah and Shelley. Micah and Shelley were stars of the film. However, they also interviewed two other people and one of them was Carlos Fuentes, who wrote the symphony for Rancho Cordova that was used last year for our 20th birthday party. And to hear him talk about the three movements of the symphony was absolutely fascinating. The first movement was called "The Lady at Mill Station" and it was about people who might arrive at a train station and the, and all of the things they might deal with, whether they're brand new to the region or, or just, you know, going and coming. The middle, the middle movement is about trying to capture the essence of Rancho Cordova, what it's like to live here, what it's like to, to, to work and play and learn here. And the third one, this is so cool, it's called "Tocata Coriana" because one of the unique things that we tell everybody is that we're the only place that has music in a grocery store. Well, now we have an ode to a grocery store. He wrote this piece of music specifically to express the hustle and bustle that goes on in Coriana while all the musicians are playing. There, I mean, it might as well be a street in downtown New York, the hustle and bustle and the international flavor that comes and goes at Coriana. And tocata was not a musical term that I was familiar with, but it has to do with, it's almost like staccato and it has to do with very rapid key movement. And it just really expresses everything that goes on in Coriana. So I'm sure they'll show the film in other venues and I encourage everyone to take advantage of an opportunity to go see it.
Very cool. Vice Mayor Polapati.
As Councilmember Garrett Gatewood mentioned, we attended the Technology and Innovation Subcommittee meeting where we explored the latest technological advancement with the city software, what we're going to do with upgrades to the city website and how we're going to simplify the permit process. And it's all going to be online, so most of you don't have to come into the city hall to get your permits these days. We also discussed ways on how to have safe and effective AI government in the government operation. So we're educating the city staff and hopefully soon, we're going to get that flow into the city residents on how to use AI safe, in a safe and secure manner. I attended with Mayor Sander the Sacramento County meeting where we discussed the next phase of the Mater Veterans Village. We also gave them an update on this library. We had that, we had the discussion on the Rancho Cordova library and how we want to have branches at the last council meeting, so we gave them an update on that. We also discussed on the hot topic of homeless, which was, you know, a hot topic, but county had more to say on it than we did. Last but not least, city manager runner and myself, we attended the AAPI Night Market in downtown, which was hosted by the Asian Chamber of Commerce. This was a really well-attended event. I think nearly 4,000 people attended it and in attendance were also Congresswoman Doris Matsui and Mayor Steinberg. That's for my report. Thank you.
Very good. Well, most of you have mentioned the events I was at. Veterans Day was certainly a pleasure and a treat, really, really a great memorial done there and I think it plays very well in that venue. I noticed that the VA had some sort of a tent set up with chairs. I'm not sure if they did their own event or if that was for some other purpose, but that, that is a, an ongoing discussion, I think, with the VA about how we move forward with Veterans Day and Memorial Day events. Cordova High School graduation was pretty awesome, seeing all those kids there, having them stand up for different honors. It was really cool interacting with some of the kids that I've known for years and having them, you know, engage with us as, as people they know in the community. I think that's a very positive thing. And other discussions with some of you, you know, our role as role models is important and the opportunities that we can provide to students in Rancho Cordova from the city perspective, I think is also really important, as one of our public commentators tonight mentioned. The, the Golden West Invitational Track Meet, one of the world's sort of famous track meets, occurred here in Rancho Cordova on Saturday. And we were lucky in that attendance there was not as high as it sometimes is because at the same time, we had a girls softball tournament going on, we had a Junior Lancers football training thing going on, and we had a concert and film debut at the PAC. I don't think the Park District scheduled a, a swim meet this year, but it does make the point that more coordination among our various activities is really necessary because if we, if we, next year, it'll again be a very large event. And when that happens, if we have these accidental coinciding events, we could have chaos in that area. We can obviously handle thousands of people there, but when you get to tens of thousands, it's very structurally challenging. The, I'm glad the concert went well and the film preview is pretty exciting. That, is that available online yet, the film?
I don't know, David.
Okay. That's something I need to check. We had a fun discussion at the county two-by-two with regard to libraries in the future. I threw out some, some crazy ideas to see what they would say. No, no one bit. Things like, you know, there are other spaces in Rancho Cordova, we could host this. Could we talk about a partnership? Could we talk about a partnership, county and city?
Yeah.
Not so much. So we've got, we've got more work to do there to be sure our residents have great access to, to everything libraries bring to us. That's my report. Mr. City Manager, you have anything more?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Just to add on to the conversation around the youth, I think you covered many of the events that I, I was at, but I think the one that I wanted to highlight was the pro-youth graduation that happened last Friday. And I had the ability to welcome them and the twenty to twenty-five students. As you were welcoming the high school grads at Cordova High, I was talking to our pro-youth graduation. And so these are twenty to twenty-five students in Rancho Cordova that go through a program and learn all the new and interesting things that we do in, in the city and in the community. And I just want to highlight the, the five areas that they presented on. So that, or the culmination of their graduation is a presentation on some initiatives or things. And so one was a cultural celebration. And so connecting to the IFest and those different opportunities there and absolutely knew about the IFest, but had their own spin on a cultural celebration that they wanted to do. There was a conversation around improved roads. It's the one you don't normally see from this group, is talking about road quality and, and potholes, but that came up in this group's presentation and conversation. Bookstore and community Cordova library ideas and how to move those forward. An esports gaming business. And so that was an interesting proposal from the, from the youth. And then a summer jog-a-thon for, for the community. And so, it's a very interesting and things that align with some of the conversations that were already happening, which is, which is great. So that's my only additional update.
I'm sure there's something else I've forgotten, but I do know two that I have forgotten. One is Chief Tameo, thank you for facilitating that ride-along last week. I always enjoy those. You always see a side of the community that you don't necessarily see otherwise, you don't perceive. That particular evening, I guess it was veteran, or Memorial Day evening, we really had no calls for service. So what happened was officers drove around and we looked in problem areas and saw, you know, what was happening in alleys and what was happening at rail stations and what was happening at some businesses. It was a really unique view to not really have any, any crisis calls to respond to. And the other cool thing I did today was I saw Echelon Catapult at the Rancho Cordova Youth Center, teaching a whole bunch of Rancho Cordova kids about STEM. And they're doing that again this summer, the way they did last summer. And it is a really cool thing to make that available to a whole bunch of Rancho Cordova kids right in our Rancho Cordova Youth Center.
Great.
All right. With that, we are going to move on to consent calendar items, item number thirteen. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter on the consent calendar agenda may also do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. Are there any items the council wishes to pull from the consent calendar? Which is items thirteen point one to thirteen point seven.
Do we have any public comment?
The city clerk's office did receive one public comment via email. It's been distributed to the city council. It's been placed on the city's website. It's also in a binder in the back of the council chambers. And that is for items number thirteen point six and thirteen point seven from Jason Holder.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy if you would pull item thirteen point seven, just so that I can address that public comment.
All right. We will address that separately, item thirteen point seven. Motion?
I will move approval of items thirteen point one through thirteen point six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yep.
Councilmember Terry is absent. Vice Mayor Polapati?
Yes.
Mayor Sander?
Aye. Okay. That leaves us item thirteen point seven.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Mr. Holder made two relatively minor requests of this item. The city manager and I and staff have reviewed this and we have no objection to, two of the, the two items, one with a slight modification. So we would ask you to go ahead and move this item, just with the addition to the first page of the plan, that this is not a qualified, we will add the phrase, this is not a qualified plan under sequel guideline fifteen one eight three point five B. And secondly, that in the implementation section of the staff report, it notes that staff would return with, with monitoring of cap measure implementation every other year. Staff will actually be returning every year. With that, no, no further changes and we would ask you to move the item with those two clarifications.
Okay. Two modifications noted. Any questions for Adam?
And I will move approval of item thirteen point seven with the two modifications as identified by the city attorney.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Polapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry is absent. Mayor Sander?
Aye. All right. And that takes us on to item number fourteen, consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. I am going to open the public hearing. Do we have any public comment on these items?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for these items.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any items the council wishes to pull?
Seeing none, I will move approval of items fourteen point one through fourteen point five.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Polapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry is absent. Mayor Sander?
Aye. Okay. That brings us to item fifteen, public hearing items. There are none on today's calendar. That brings us to item sixteen, regular calendar items. If you would read sixteen point one, please.
Proposed Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, 2024 Recommendation.
All right. This is a really boring topic that doesn't affect anyone. So should be fun to talk about. We have a, we have a fun staff report?
Yes.
Good.
A short, a short staff report and a short presentation, if that is okay, Mayor. Good evening. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Drew Hart from the Public Works Department. I'm a senior transportation planner. We have a presentation. Sure. There we go. So our Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, we go through a number of different phases and overall is a beloved program that gives opportunity for public works staff to work with the members of the community to add some investments into the community that really improve and impact the livability and quality of life in the neighborhoods. And so briefly, I'll, I'll review just the NTME process because it's, isn't something that you all see that frequent enough that we don't want to just remind you of the process and then give the opportunity to receive feedback from you all. So that our Neighborhood Traffic Management Program has this very exciting manual that goes along with it. And it establishes both a process and procedure, as well as the Neighborhood Traffic Safety Committee that helps us democratize the process a little bit when we receive requests from members of the public, that we then vet each project through a group of, of people consisting of fire department, police department, and a few residents and city staff. In order to get to this point tonight, a request from members of the public had to have been submitted, receive, or, or the staff were collected, collected traffic data, speed and volumes, as well as collision data. And then we proposed a couple of ideas to give it back to the community where we mail out ballots. And we need to receive twenty-five percent minimum response rate. And if that twenty-five percent, greater than two-thirds of those responses have to be in favor of the proposed improvements. So if, if we're talking about it tonight, it has gone through this process already. We have a large toolbox of a few dozen different traffic calming devices or measures that we could take. Some of our most common ones are, are here on these six, but we have a number of different traffic calming devices that we can use, what would make the most sense and given the context. But overall, the, the reason this has a value to the community and to you all as a council is that it creates more livable, more walkable neighborhoods that improve the safety and, and livability of our communities. So it is a short list this time around. We, last cycle, we had a lot, lot larger of a list and we kind of cleared the deck then. This is another set of three that we wanted to bring to you to continue to move it forward so it doesn't linger too long while we wait for more to come in. But there are three that I'll go over very briefly. So Las Casas is up there by Cordova Meadows Elementary. And in this stretch, we are proposing to add some speed, some speed limit signs, as well as some improved striping, both center line striping around this curve and along the edges as well. Pericles Drive is over there by Robert McGarvey Elementary School, where we'd be doing a couple of speed lumps, some high-visibility crosswalks where we already have stop signs, and then a couple other striping improvements at the ends, just to try and create more of a gateway effect and slow down vehicles as they enter this street. And then lastly, on Pistachio Way, we, we propose a speed lump on Pistachio Way. As far as the next steps after this meeting tonight, we'll incorporate any comments that we received, as well as enter into a contract with one of our on-call design firms to help us prepare final designs that we can move forward to construction early next year. And at that point, I'm happy to take any questions or comments that the council has.
All right. Any questions or comments? Linda?
On Las Casas, why did you stop in the middle of the street? I mean, instead of going all the way around Las Casas?
That's a really great question. So this actually ties into existing improvements on either side of Las Casas. So this is a, this is a stretch right here where it'll feed into some safe routes to school improvements that we have to the west that are-
For Meadows?
Correct.
Okay.
For Meadows Elementary School.
But why doesn't it go, keep going on the way around northeast?
Continuing northeast?
Yeah.
Yes. We didn't see as much of a speeding concern as it went around that curve and heading more, as it turned more north. The issues where we saw the speeding and some of the crash data was right around this curve, so that's where we focused the enhancements.
So those are the people who voted on it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I get it.
Yeah.
So Drew, you mentioned you reached out to the residents and received their approval?
Yes. So if it is at this point being presented to you all, we've sent out ballots, ballots were received. And as long as we received greater than twenty-five percent response rate and two-thirds of those that we received a response from gave us the green light, then that, those are being presented tonight.
I have one question on your solar lights.
Oh, yes.
Is that really how bright it is during the day? The picture that you had?
Yes. These right here? Yes. We do have different types of beacons that can flash. Sometimes they're surrounding a sign such as this, or sometimes we call them RRFBs, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, and they flash when a pedestrian pushes a button at a crosswalk. And yes, they, they light up quite, quite brightly. Yes.
Well, again, solar powered lights, damaging that bright, that's pretty good.
It's the LED technology probably helps, right? Get more lumens out there for, for less wattage. All right. Any other questions or comments? Do you have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment for this item.
So these are summer twenty twenty-five, just to be completely clear on that point, construction dates. And if someone's interested in doing something in their neighborhood that's not represented here, it is an open process to do so. Just contact us in Public Works and we'll set you on that process.
That's correct, Mayor.
Was that a start on summer twenty twenty-five?
That'll be completed on twenty twenty-five.
Oh, sorry.
Construction completion.
Yeah. Completed by twenty twenty-five.
What would initiate the process, if there's any other interested parties out there, is a petition that you can find on our website. Get ten signatures from your, from your nearby neighbors and that starts the process. And then as far as this batch of three, after tonight, we will begin earnest design work to, to get ready for construction early in next year so that in summer twenty-five, we'll be delivering the projects and being complete.
Good. I should point out, we, we do this because if we don't get a neighborhood vote, and even when we do, what's likely to happen is that someone's going to complain as soon as the speed bump goes in. Could be the person who speeds on the street, could be someone else who's just sensitive to them. But it's sort of inevitable that this is a somewhat controversial thing. And the reason is, if it's not obvious to people, is that when you put in a speed bump, you can have the sound of a car slowing down, then the sound of it going over the speed bump, then the sound of it accelerating on the other side. It's actually add a lot of noise and a ba-bump, ba-bump, sort of, you know, attribute to your neighborhood as cars go over those. So it's not a panacea per se, but it is a, it is a pretty good option. And of course, there's lots of options other than just old speed bumps. Good. The other comment I liked to make about this is the people who often complain the most about the bulbouts and the class four bicycle lanes, et cetera, are often the people who also state, well, you know, what's the big problem with having the bulbout? Well, I have to slow down now to make the turn. Okay. It's not exactly the end of the world, but it is change. So all of these things are, are change. And we will survive them and the community will be better for them. So thank you guys for good work.
Okay. Then I will move that we approve the proposed Neighborhood Traffic Management Program and we direct staff to proceed with the final design.
Is there a second? It does say provide comments, but I also have instructions for a vote.
Second.
I think we'll vote, just to be certain.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yep.
Councilmember Terry is absent. Vice Mayor Polapati?
Yes.
Mayor Sander?
Aye. All right. With that, we are going to move on to item sixteen point two. And I guess if it's legally required, Madam Clerk, you might have to read all of that.
Okay. A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a conveyance agreement and related documents with Sacramento County for acquisition of property within the former Mather Air Force Base located on the southeast corner of Blackley Street and, Stefan? Sharaw Avenue. EPN number zero six seven zero zero one zero zero nine three zero 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 zero. And an American Rescue Plan Act subaward agreement with Sacramento County for the city-sponsored Mather Veterans Village Phase Four Multi-Family Housing Project for homeless veterans.
Stacy Wally Sharaw, one of the original Mercury Seven. Sorry.
And Stefan, I don't think I got your full social security number in that title, so we might need to-
I think her, her reading of the title is going to be longer than my presentation.
All right. Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Stefan Heisler, Housing Manager for the city, to present this item. Briefly, as promised, the, this is just the next installment in this project. You'll be seeing us again in two weeks and you'll be seeing us again in four weeks and you'll be seeing us again after that, too. But tonight, we're just focused on the site acquisition of the property from the county and I'll run through here pretty quickly. So the goals are just to present the site acquisition portion of this project and receive direction regarding execution of, of the site acquisition documents and the funding agreements with the Sacramento County. Some key project details have not changed in the last couple of weeks. Still seventy units of multi-family housing, fifty-eight one-bedroom, twelve two-bedroom for homeless and disabled veterans and homeless families, and a priority for being for senior veterans sixty-two and older where we can. And then a, an income limit of fifty percent of the area median income for households. So the sec, the land conveyance, because Sacramento County is the current landowner, so the adoption of this resolution would authorize execution of several documents for the land to transfer to the city. The first being the land conveyance agreement. So we're agreeing to a purchase price of $10 on this property on condition that the parcel is used for affordable housing for homeless and disabled veterans and homeless families. Also, the affordable housing agreement, so this is sort of like a, sort of a pre or an early regulatory agreement that would restrict the property for the use of low-income homeless and disabled veterans and homeless families, and then as well as a quick claim deed. I will put an asterisk on this slide. The documents, as they're drafted, are enough to get us over the finish line to keep the project moving forward on our timeline. But we do expect that there will be amendments necessary in order to incorporate sort of the perspectives of other project partners, such as the lender, the tax credit financier, who will come onto the project in the coming months if we're successful with the tax credit award. So expect to see these again. It's not quite the final word, unfortunately, but we're in a good enough shape to keep moving forward. And then the ARPA subaward agreement. So this is the agreement where the city will receive $3 million from Sacramento County for the purpose of this project. This resolution would authorize us to receive the funding. And then it also includes the terms and conditions for the county providing the funding, which is to do the project as we've described. And then again, sort of as I clued in, so two weeks from now, we will also come back for resolution to then commit the, this- this funding to the developer in the project. So heads up on that. Very quickly on SEQA Analysis and Surplus Land Act, as the acquisition of property, this, this action is exempt under SEQA. Future actions will be analyzed under SEQA at the, at the appropriate time. And then under Surplus Land Act, as a transfer from one agency to another, this is an exempt surplus land transfer, except that, you know, in the future, when we transfer it to the developer, we'll be coming back with another Surplus Land Act exemption for affordable housing. That concludes my presentation. The staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution. The next steps, very quickly, this item will be heard by the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors on June eleventh to get their authorization and then we'll sign all the documents. We'll complete the land transaction by the end of this month. And that'll help us to meet that July second tax credit application. Happy to take any questions and comments.
Any questions or comments? No. I did get lots of questions about this, though, at the, at the Memorial Day celebration. People are very appreciative of the city's efforts here, so I just thought I'd pass that on to staff. They're looking. One lot at a time. They're looking forward to the next step. They're looking forward to the next step as we continue to provide housing for homeless veterans, so.
So if there's no public comment?
Is there any?
We do have public comment.
Comment?
Jessa Rego.
Hello, thank you very much. It's me again. I would like to speak in support of this. I think it's absolutely wonderful that we're building housing for veterans. I think it's really, really important that we take care of our veterans. This has been a very, like, an issue of the country not taking care of our veterans for a very long time. So I love this and I want to speak in support of it. I see that it's the American Rescue Plan Act. These are federal grants, federal funds. The last time I was here, ARPA was also on the agenda, as was the Vice Mayor's meeting with Ami Barra. So I would just like to take this extra opportunity to point out the relationships that cities have with our federal government. We know they do. They deeply, deeply are interconnected. We know you guys talk to Ami Barra. That we've been trying to talk to Ami Barra about our issue nonstop for eight months and he has been really not doing anything in violation of federal policy. We want you to go to him and say, our residents are freaking out. I'm losing my mind. I am doing everything to keep it together so I can keep showing up to my jobs here. I've totally set aside my side hustle where I use a subcontractor in this town that's business you're losing out on. And I wanted to bring that up. I don't even know if you'll care about my tiny little business when we have Aerojet, okay, that's like much bigger. And that is a federal contractor and our families work there. And how do you think that makes us feel? To think that our work product is going to kill, dismember, terrorize children?
Do you have comments regarding this particular project?
It's a federal-city relationship. I'm in support of it. My community is in support of it. And you guys need to think about the federal-to-city relationship.
Any other public comment?
There's no additional public comment.
Hearing none, I will move that we find the environmental documentation adequate and appropriate and that we adopt the resolution that would allow the city manager to proceed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry is absent. Vice Mayor Pulapati.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye. Then we go on to item sixteen point three. Another nice subject for the clerk.
A resolution approving a written report describing the measures taken to alleviate the condition which led to the adoption of the urgency ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on the establishment, expansion, or modification of uses in the villages of Zinfandel Special Planning Area designated therein as M1 Light Industrial and MP Office Industrial Park Zones.
All right, very good. Darcy.
Good evening, Mayor Sander, members of the council. Darcy Galar with the Planning Department. Pursuant to the government code, on June nineteenth of last year, the city council adopted an urgency ordinance and that established a temporary moratorium on the establishment, expansion, or modification of uses in the M1 and MP Zone within the villages of Zinfandel Special Planning Area. That ordinance initially provided a forty-five day moratorium. Staff came back to you in July of last year to prepare and present to you a similar report that we're doing tonight on those efforts to alleviate those conditions. At that time, staff let you know that we still had a lot of work to do ahead of us. So requested an additional extension, which was granted in August. That was for ten months and fifteen days. So since that second extent, or that first extension of the initial moratorium, the city council has adopted an ordinance that further prohibited some of the uses in the M1 and MP Zones of that special planning area. There's still some additional work that needs to be done, studying some additional permitted and conditionally permitted uses as well as looking at what uses would be better supported by the market in these particular zones. So therefore, those conditions are still present. So this written report provides to you what we have done. There's still tasks that are left to do. We will be coming back to you if you do adopt this resolution in two weeks to actually extend it for an additional year. It may not take an additional year to do those tasks, but we will ask for that year because we're only allowed to ask for this last extension. That concludes my presentation.
All right, very good. Any public comment on this item?
Yes, we do. James Garcia.
Good evening. I'm James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. I live out there. I've been fighting this for a long time. Appreciate the city's effort in trying to squash a bad policy that was adopted a long time ago. So I'm in favor of what Darcy just mentioned, of coming back, getting this report so you can legally extend the urgency ordinance. So that way, we can actually figure out what we can and can't build there that's going to help us out. So I'm in favor of this resolution right now and in favor of it being extended for yet another year. So, thank you.
All right. Any other public comment?
No.
Very well. Any questions from the council? If not, I'm open to motion.
I move that we adopt sixteen point four.
Is there a second? Sixteen point three.
I'm sorry, sixteen point three.
We're almost to sixteen point four.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry is absent. Vice Mayor Pulapati.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye. All right, that brings us to item sixteen point four. And this is a resolution approving and establishing a city council policy to lead with a citywide perspective. And I think, Micah, this one's yours.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I think we'll pull up a PowerPoint and I'll let whoever's drive and drive for me. It's only a few slides, so. Really just want to thank the council for holding this council discussion and workshop and visioning that we held. And next slide is good, Persephone. March twenty-first, that is, not March twenty-third, for the council workshop. We talked about draft council policy and the agenda tonight is talk about bringing back an approved resolution. That was an outcome of the discussion we had at the workshop, coming from a, leading from a citywide perspective as we move forward to to district-based elections. And so, next slide. So we held the meeting on March twenty-first and we had the pleasure of the event being facilitated by Nancy Hetrick with Raftellus. The summary of the workshop is attached to the staff report. And some of the outcomes from the workshop were that council directed staff to return with a resolution, what we're doing here today. Establishment of council policy to lead with a citywide perspective in, before the two thousand and twenty-four election. Provide new council members with the resolution and policy and articles written by the local governments titled Attributes of Exceptional Councils. And so attaching this from the institute was something we'll continue to do and then creating an orientation packet for council members to be created when new council members, when they're elected, arrive. And so we are moving forward with those different pieces, but one of those bigger pieces was approval of the resolution to lead with a citywide perspective. Next slide. And so that's the, the council policy components that are a part of that are in the resolution. These are the seven statements that you saw pieces of in the, in the visioning session with some comments. And so these were adjusted with those comments. And so before you today is the resolution with these seven statements of leading with a citywide perspective when we, when you review different criteria moving forward as the city. And then the next slide, Persephone. Next steps, this resolution will be shared with potential candidates if approved. The ILG article will be shared with council members and then a part of the council orientation packet will be shared as well. We, we did get direction to hold these conversations on an annual basis, to reemphasize these conversations that we'll plan to do in January of two thousand and twenty-four as part of our annual visioning conversations. And so probably can go back one step just so that you all see the resolutions that are before you today.
Yeah, it's really great. Item four, members will be informed about issues in all parts of the city regardless of district. That is a great policy commitment from all of us.
Just the right step. This with your over engagement of new, when we get our new people, they're going to come in in the next two election cycles. I just think this will help them establish. And then if we have our city manager really engage them where they're at, you know, and take them to the side. And then they get like one of you guys as a, as a buddy, you know, this could be, because if you build that culture, then someone knows like, hey, you're going to get mentored by David and he's going to teach you about stuff and you got Mike on the side and this is stuff we care about, then they won't like circle in and just be about their one little district. Because if we do that, that'll kill the city. Great.
All right. Is there public comment?
Yes. Jessa Rego.
Yes, hello. Thank you. I'm back. I read the visioning report and I'd just like to point out how much it talks about diversity and how that relates to my other comments and we are watching. And furthermore, what I forgot to mention last time, have you heard of House Resolution eight four four five? It would be to extend some Veterans Affairs benefits to United States citizens who are serving in the Israeli Army. That directly takes away from the VA benefits that we're supposed to have for our actual issues in our community.
That's all the public comment that we have for this item.
All right, we're open for a motion.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Nice.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep, yep.
Councilmember Terry is absent. Vice Mayor Pulapati.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye. That brings us to council requests for future agenda items. Any suggestions?
I'm going to leave it up to council, but I really feel like I just want to make sure that we found a, when I was doing the part of the road, the connector, cheering the connector. I was talking to Albert and I identified some new, it's not new money, but it's a new way to access the money. And I just want to make sure that we're doing everything in our power to go after whatever the city needs to be able to fund what it's trying to get. So I don't know if we want to turn that into an agenda item about talking about it or just put it on, Micah, you can make that decision for your, your group, but I just want you to know that the council as a group, we really, every time, we want to go after every grant, every fund, every chance we have to be able to fund our city.
Sure, I, I think that's talking about enhanced infrastructure financing districts and IFDs, and we have been talking about that internally and happy to bring forward a conversation. We've looked at those sources and some analysis around how those could be used to get our infrastructure projects moving forward.
Do you know that Rancho Cordova, just, just on the side note, is in the next twenty-five years, we'll have access to a billion dollars of new revenue that will come into the city? I was shocked about how well-built out you guys laid the formats and how we're growing right now, so.
Could be an interesting discussion. All right. Anything else, future agenda items?
I don't have a future agenda topic, but I just wanted to ask, when the heat wave for the next three days, is the city hall going to be a shelter?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, what triggers that?
Yeah, so we work with our partners at Sacramento County and Emergency Services and try to do a coordinated response to when folks start opening cooling centers. And so sometimes there's different, it's not a particular temperature. Sometimes it depends on the temperature overnight. Sometimes it depends on the air index as far as air quality as well. So it could even be a lower temperature, but air quality is not good. And so we usually make a pretty comprehensive regional approach to responding and, and usually follow suit with our partners in opening up cooling centers when, when appropriate to take care of our citizens.
Would be a good time to push purple.
That's at this moment, it's a no, but it could change at any moment.
When that happens, when we have one of those poor air quality days, it'd be a good time to push our purple air data and commentary out there. That's a great partnership with people.
Correct. And then when we do, when we do open a cooling center or one of those, or a warming center in the, in the cool times is, we put that all out on social media and into the community in a regional way.
Yeah, the NLC is obviously really interested in our partnerships. I'm going around the country talking about our partnerships and I don't think I have highlighted that one enough because it's a really unique problem that we couldn't solve on the government side, but we could by engaging residents. Yeah, that was pretty neat. All right, with that, we are, if there's nothing else, we're going to adjourn to closed session. And we will return for a closing meeting after closed session.